Strada.
Yes.
Gomber.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Redford.
Here.
Bowman.
Present.
Lehman.
Yep.
Okay. For two Nebraska Open Meetings Act for all interested parties, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the bulletin board at the south wall of the council chambers. Three, notice of changes in agenda by the city manager. Additionals may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item four of this agenda. For the four citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. We need to have approval of the planning commission minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty-four.
A motion approved.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call please, Zach.
Lou.
Yes.
Redford.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Strada.
Yes.
Gomber.
Yes.
We have our live performance, whatever, spoken into. Not all of us have perfect hearing.
Okay, okay. This is great. Okay, so number six, public hearing. A, planning commission to conduct a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing and obtaining comment on the redevelopment plan for the Northfield Retirement Communities Garden Homes Project. Zach, you want to?
City Attorney Kent Hayden felt.
We're gonna open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, yep.
It's nice to see you all. My name is Kent Hayden felt. I'm a deputy city attorney for the city of Scottsbluff. Unfortunately, John Selsor couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. So you're stuck with me. I'm here tonight for this public hearing to talk about the redevelopment plan for Northfield Retirement Communities Garden Homes Project. This project is where Northfield is going to continue to build independent living duplexes on their property. There's already been two built. Their plan now is to complete seven more. The project is in an area that has been designated as blighted and substandard and in need for redevelopment. The standard of review for the commission tonight is whether the project and the plan conform to the general plan for development of the city, including the twenty sixteen Scottsbluff Comprehensive Plan. The project site is currently zoned as R one A, single family, which includes two family dwellings as a principal use. There is no change in zoning required by this plan and project. The site is in the northeast district under our comprehensive plan, which encourages multifamily residential development. In addition, it will provide a good transition between the commercial zone to the east and the residential area to the west. As of now, your standard of review is just a comprehensive plan and it meets all the requirements. You have a memo in your packet. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. The plan is also in the packet. It is a significant investment that Northfield plans to make in the area. And then they will request tip development funds for the project site in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Do you have any questions for me in regard to the plan of the project? And if not, Mr. Johnson's here along with his CFO.
I'm sorry.
Sheena, I'm sorry, Sheena, are here to answer any questions and provide a more overview of the project. However, if you're done with me, I'll let Mr. Johnson tell you more about the project. Any questions at all? No?
Mr. Johnson, you want to?
Good evening. My name's Bill Johnson. I'm the chief executive officer over at Northfield Retirement Communities, right across the road from here. Over the last so many years, we've looked at what the needs are in the community. And we have congregate living. That's the big building that you see over here. And we have a care center, nursing home on the backside of it. In looking at things and ideas, not everybody likes to live in congregate living. Kind of like it goes back to dorm living. So we looked at some other opportunities and the board of directors decided to go on this journey. We have four built right now, or two, two units, four living units in there. They're, they've all been sold. They, it's for life care. And that's one of the things, what you do with life care is you prepay basically your long-term care and pay a monthly maintenance fee. And when the time comes to go to the nursing home, like in today's environment, you may be spending ten to twelve thousand dollars a year in the nursing home. Under these, you may spend maybe three or four thousand as well, but you already prepaid. So anyway, looking at that and trying to come up with an idea. So we've got four that have, that are full right now. Three of them are from people from the community. One gentleman's daughter lives here and he's from New Mexico and moved in. We're looking at, working with the bank. We've got two more units, four more we're building. And the plan is as soon as we have two sold, we will build two more or one more and just keep going around. The plan is, is to go in there, put an infrastructure in there and it'll be a cult to sack. It'll be a real great addition to the community here that we have. We want to be good neighbors to the community and that's what we try every day to do. So we're looking at, we know housing is an issue in this community. We all know that. And what that does is lets somebody else, they can move in, sell their home to a younger couple and kind of a win-win. So any questions you may have of me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have any comments on this? Any questions in the public? Close the meeting, open meeting and then we'll take, do we have to roll on it?
Motion approved. Motion approved.
So we need a motion to approve and then a second.
I'll second it. I think it fits exactly what, you know, the comprehensive plan is looking for and everything. And they've already built two, so.
Okay, roll call, Zach.
Strada.
Yes.
Gomber.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Redford.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to number seven, other business. The Marvin Planning Consultants to present program on comprehensive plan to planning commission.
So Mason and Spencer with Marvin Planning Consultants are here to present their work so far on the new comprehensive plan. And they have a presentation, I believe, or kind of. Bear with me just one second. Okay, so I'm Mason Herman. Like Zach said, we are with Marvin Planning Consultants. We're out of David City. I think some of our other members of our firm have been out here before to kind of kick off this process. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. So we, we were out of David City, a little further away. But it's been really important for us to come out here. When we were back here in October, Spencer's going to get into this a little bit, but we gathered so much good data, talking to people, being here in the community. And we're going to go over that a little bit tonight, just kind of as a refresher, just some of the things that we've heard. I'll let Spencer get into that. And then secondly, I just want to say thank you to Shreya and Zach and to Kevin. They've been great to work with. We meet with them gosh, every, every couple of weeks to go over things. So I think we're moving the project forward in a really great way. Taylor as well, thank you for the data. I mean, as we have a lot of great support. So I think this project's moving forward really well so far. What I've brought tonight is a draft. I want to emphasize a draft form of the plan so far. We're going to go through every page, so I hope you guys are ready for that. We're not. I'm going to highlight a few key points, kind of get into what we need you guys to look at and then just kind of get into some discrepancies and things we're seeing versus we're hearing. So with that, I, I will start with just kind of an overview of unfortunately where we are at with data. A lot of what you'll see in this document is based on the census from twenty twenty and the estimates from that point. What, one thing we need from you guys is to look at this and say, all right, this actually, this estimate is not right. We want you to take a look at this. At the end of the day, we don't want to present a document full of doom and gloom saying Scottsbluff is failing here and bad and this is bad. You know, we're working with the best we got. So Spencer, again, we'll get into this. We've heard a lot of positive things about the community. What we might get into tonight, you might see is some negative things with this data. We want to rectify that and make sure that's right. We don't want to give you a document that says Scottsbluff isn't a bad place because honestly, I don't think it is. So with that, what we have printed out tonight, you know, an introduction chapter, kind of about what the project and the comprehensive plan is about. Community engagement chapter, which is still quite a bit to be filled. We have a survey going right now. We have more groups to talk to. We have data to parse through that Spencer helped gather. And then we have more town hall meetings, I believe, in the future to keep getting more info from people. So that book has not been written figuratively or literally at all. I will say for anyone else here in the audience, until this plan is adopted by the city council, Spencer and myself and others in our office, we will take a phone call and listen to what people want in this plan. So this is not, it will not be final until it is final. So any and all input is appreciated. So second, you know, second part of this plan that I brought here tonight gets into the data. We look at population data, housing data and economic data. And some of the things I want to highlight in the document, you know, again, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But for starters, you know, I've been doing this for about five years now. Keith Marvin, our office, has been doing it for a really long time. I'm not going to say how long. But at least in my experience, working other communities like Hastings, Grand Island, North Platte, other communities in Nebraska, there's not many that you look at where the population is staying the same or barely going down or barely going up. I, most of my, my wife's family is from Hastings and I hate to say it, their community, it's growing, but it could be growing more. Or Grand Island, obviously they're growing, but there's other communities that aren't. I mean, Scottsbluff is so steady in the population. I think that's where we need to start and really promote in this plan is that this community is not dying. Like a lot of other cities in rural areas, Scottsbluff is not. Population is steady. The median age is about the same as the entire state of Nebraska. I mean, it's very close. You know, it's not an aging out community. However, this is where the data starts to tell us different things than what we're hearing or thinking about the community. The population pyramid on page, not population pyramid, apologies, table three point two. If you guys could flip to that, page seventeen. What the data tells us is that when people graduate high school, they leave the community. They don't necessarily come back to have kids. Some do, but not many. When you want to retire, speaking of retirement communities in Scottsbluff, people leave to go stay somewhere else or escape somewhere else. And then when it comes time to get into nursing home, not many people stick around either. So again, Spencer, we're going to end this. That is not what we've heard. I personally have some friends that when they went off to school, med school in Kearney, came back here immediately to start a family, immediately. They wanted to be back here in Scottsbluff because this is a great place to raise a family, a great place to be. Spencer heard that, I mean, gosh, for an entire week, that this is a great place to raise a family. The data is not really telling you that, us that, that people, you know, something we need to parse out in this process. And honestly, if you could tell us tonight, you know, do you feel like people can retire here and have the services necessary, go into a nursing home here? Or is that somewhere else people have to go? It's not often that you can stay in the community you've lived in your entire life and retire here. So those are the kind of the things we need, we need people like you to tell us, is that actually true? Is this data right? Because again, we don't want to present something to you in the end that says, tells a different story.
If I could jump in, something I noticed is I know Scottsbluff seems to surround a county a whole lot. So I wonder if some of these individuals are maybe living outside of Scottsbluff in the county at large and then coming in here for services or things like that, that could also be something as well. Because that was one of the narratives that we kept hearing was that, you know, I moved away for college and then I came back. But we just weren't seeing that in the data necessarily. So we were wondering if maybe there was something you could, you guys could tell us about that. It also could be some confirmation bias as well. I mean, that's also a possibility. Sorry.
It's all good. Yeah, we are a team. So again, that's kind of what I wanted to highlight in the population data. There's, there's good things and there's bad things. We need you guys to tell us if it's true. So to get into the housing data a little bit, you know, some of the highlights, starting in chapter four. I mean, again, it kind of backs up what we see with population data. You know, majority of households are one to two persons, not a lot of, you know, three, four, five person households. Not a lot of families, older housing stock, but I mean, you could see that in any city in America at this point. That housing stock is old and needs rehabilitated. You know, another interesting thing we're seeing in the data as far as building permits is that they've really tapered off in the last, gosh, ten, fifteen years. That's something, again, we need to confirm. Is that actually true? You know, if our data says there's only been six houses built in the last, what, two years? So again, we have, might have some discrepancies there.
So why would the data not be true?
It all, it all starts with, so when the census went out and. Yeah. The, the, it is such a terrible answer, but we are working off estimates based on the census in twenty twenty. A lot of people just didn't take it. So then when they build estimates off of something that's incomplete, we're given data that's, might not be true. It's the best we got, so.
Are you taking into account the communities or the subdivisions, basically, that are outside the city limits?
That's a great question. I don't know how the census gathers that. I would assume it would be all the houses out within.
The country club and, you know, or within, within our, our zoning, what do we have, three miles?
One mile.
One mile?
Two miles.
Yeah.
Two miles.
Two, two miles.
It's two miles, isn't it?
Extra territorial.
Two miles?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just wondering because.
Yeah.
Wouldn't Zach be able to, I mean, off the premise of a new build, right? I mean, you guys probably keep checking that data pretty good.
I mean, some of them are on city utilities and so forth, so we could do an estimate on how many.
So only six in the past two years, huh?
Again, that's the estimate. And I mean, Zach, if you could help us with a real number, again, we want, we want the real data. So nine, yeah. Yeah, that's a good, I don't know how the census gathers that. I would assume it's out into the ETJ, but I'm not entirely sure.
But we have been hearing, one thing in a lot of our conversations is that it sounds like housing is expensive to build. I mean, housing is, housing is an issue everywhere. And it sounds like here uniquely, housing is also a problem for several factors. It sounds like we don't have, we have smaller developers, but getting larger developers to come out here can be issues sometimes or imperials. It still might not be far off, but we just wanted to make sure.
Can you do estimates of number of housings by utility hookups?
We could do that as well. Yep.
I mean, I would think that would give you a little bit more idea of those houses within that two mile.
We, we have minutes data for all of that. We'll get it to them.
Yeah, I, I, because I, I just, it's always bothered me that we don't include, I mean.
Yeah.
There's a, down forty-second street, all of, you know, on north of forty-second street on, down west. And I mean, there are housing developments that are not in city limits that could increase our population by a thousand or more, probably.
Is that where you get that, like, looking at, like, some flexible zoning and things like that to allow for more development?
And.
Is that what, those are issues, I mean, things that you probably would put forth in a cop plan? Whether or not that fits where we want those flexible zoning areas at and things like that, correct?
Absolutely. No, yeah, and that, that was something I wanted to get to at the end. I mean, one big reason to get this data right is we want, when we get talking about future land use, talk about the zoning, we want to prescribe stuff that actually meets the need. We don't want to say, well, there's not really a need for housing or there is more need for this. We want to make sure, we got to get this first part right so we can get that next.
Know what we're looking at so we can.
Yes, hundred percent. Yep. Yeah, that's a great point. So I guess in the last chunk, I want to get into about data. And this is something I think Spencer is going to touch on a little bit. As far as employment, in the economics chapter, table five point three, we look at, sorry, we look at where people work. Where's the five point three? Page thirty-eight. Something Spencer is going to get into a little bit is just talking about healthcare. Employment in the city is down quite a bit, at least according to the Bureau of Economic Analysis. So with the healthcare employment going down and hearing some issues and some concerns about the hospital, that is something I think we need to maybe explore, maybe talk with healthcare staff, maybe a little bit more just about the state of healthcare services in the city. Be that, you know, my wife is a healthcare provider and she is burnt out like crazy and has been working in it for two years. You know, I can only imagine working in it. She doesn't work in a nursing home, thank goodness, but those people that do deserve a medal. So I, I, I understand why that number is going down and it's going down everywhere. And I think that's something we need to kind of, kind of take a look at here in the city. Make sure those services are being provided to people.
Well, in the college is just building a addition for, to train more healthcare workers.
That's fantastic.
You know, and I.
Yes.
And they must have done statistics to look at the necessity for that.
Yes.
And I would think you could look at what they're looking at.
Yeah.
The workers in the healthcare sector or wherever, are you considering all employees, including traveling nurses? Or are you just considering permanent employees?
That's a great question. I'm not sure how that's gathered, if that's traveling or permanent.
Hospital up here has become an employer of traveling people.
That is, yeah.
And part-time. The sugar factory is much the same way. The sugar factory hires people, they've got an ad out for fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. But they hire through a hiring service. People go to work there, they wind up paying thirteen dollars an hour for at least ninety days.
Yeah, the turnover is pretty high.
Well, it's seasonal, too.
Yeah.
It depends on how they're, how they are hired. Are they hired as a seasonal employer, full-time employer, probably?
I know I talked to the hiring person over there and I know a person who put in on the ad over the radio and didn't get a call, so they put into advanced services, got hired right away. And I talked to the person hired to the age that they only hire people mostly from advanced services unless they've improved, they've got something else they can use. So they pay for a few dollars an hour, had five, three, one daycare, no.
Okay. So that, that's my, that's my spiel on data. I don't mean to be a negative Nellie sometimes with what we work with, but it's so important to make sure what we have is right, what we hear is right. So then we can make sure everything down the road is right. So I wanted to get into that discussion. So the last part of what I've printed out is a review of the community facilities and the parks. I'm not going to review that because those are things you guys know. What we're looking for is, do we have it right? We put together maps. We want to make sure those are right and legible, make sure they're workable. Because in the end, I think this is something, you know, we discussed at the kickoff meeting. But when we look at goals and policies for this plan and then for the city, community facilities, parks, those are going to be two huge things that we need to make sure are prioritized correctly and you guys have goals and policies to support those. So again, just review those and let us know if we've got those right or not. So I'll let Spencer talk a little bit about community engagement, kind of what he heard. I wasn't out here in October. Spencer and a few other people from our team were. But real quick, I do want to talk about next steps with this document. We're going to keep working on it. The, the rest of the document. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I, sure. And then, yeah, let Spencer get into that.
So I guess I just want to preface this with, we had some great conversations with some great individuals and you guys have been awesome to work with. I do want to make sure that I do just make a note that this may or may not be representative of how everyone in Scottsbluff feels on these issues. Of course, we're hearing from the people who are the most vocal, right? So whether or not it is representational of how everyone feels, it is how your most vocal citizens feel about certain things. So I guess take that into, into considerations. Zach, I know I shared this document with you and I believe with you, Kevin. So you guys have access to it and anybody wants, who wants it, I guess, talk to me or talk to them. It's just some quick notes I took. So we had a lot of great focus conversations, kind of some of the major takeaways. And these are also not unique to Scottsbluff whatsoever, right? Every city is dealing with some of these issues. Communication and collaboration, it seemed like there were some kind of miscommunications and/or issues with communicating and getting things out to citizens. That's not necessarily the city's fault. We understand that newspapers in a lot of places are hardly, you know, non-existent. I mean, Lincoln Journal Star isn't really read pretty widely anymore back where I'm from. So with the absence of a strong newspaper in, in most places, it kind of falls to social media, word of mouth, other things like that. So maybe we can look into some cities who are doing a great job with that and maybe provide you guys or Zach, if you know, some cities that are doing a good job with that. Because everyone seems to be struggling with that issue. We ran into a lot of people who said, well, I didn't know that service existed or I didn't know that, that thing was, was here, which again, is, is pretty common across lots of different places. I'm sure you know this as well. The East Overland community doesn't necessarily always feel heard. And I think that is a bridge that is slowly being built. But I think there has, has been some past hurt that maybe hasn't been addressed or healed. And then kind of in the same vein, across the river with gearing, we've heard the joke so many times over and over again that everyone's like, oh, we need to bury this. This is so over, you know, I'm so tired of this. And then they'll say, they'll follow it up with, well, but that one time that we tried to work with them and they wouldn't work with us or, you know, that one time that we offered this and they wouldn't. So it feels like everyone, it feels like everyone's been burned in some little way and everyone still kind of remembers that a little bit. But everyone we've talked to seems pretty frustrated that gearing in Scottsbluff don't work more closely together. But then, you know, almost immediately after the fact, they say, well, you know, there was that one time. So, so I think that's still kind of conscious in people's brains. Housing and jobs, you guys are aware of this, but it seems like we have a shortage of housing and that might also be impacting jobs and job growth. I don't have a lot of solutions on this one. I think this is a, an issue of, of housing prices and materials, I believe, being high or what the major costs are unique to you guys. But it does look like in the comprehensive plan, I did notice that you guys have more than double, I think it was page twenty-five, you guys have more than double the tri or quadplexes average of the state.
Middle housing.
Which, which is, yeah, missing, if you're familiar with the term missing middle housing, you know, not everyone can afford or not everyone wants a single-family house, right? Lots of young people rent, lots of people who don't have interest in kids or who maybe are moving or whatever their situation is. So it looks like you guys have a good number of, of middle housing. I don't know if that's older housing units or what, but that's an indicator of some potential there. But yeah, housing shortage is one that kept coming up over and over again. Young professionals are looking for more active living opportunities. So it was mentioned several times about having maybe a trail connection between the community college and the downtown area for people who wanted more access to that downtown space. I think the downtown has recently gone under some revitalization. Is that correct? Some, no?
Our district.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, that, yeah, that's a good question.
Wow, I mean, like, what, ten years ago?
Just some, some folks that we had talked to had mentioned the downtown space being a space they enjoyed spending time in. And so for young professionals, when we asked, what would, what would bring you here, what would keep you here? They talked about active living, active lifestyles, trails, parks. They want to spend time outside, and they want to spend time at local, small local businesses. Sports and entertainment complexes, I'm sure you guys probably are aware, that came up. Swimming pool, swimming pool, swimming pool. And then we, I guess we just heard from some elder care individuals, there was some interest in a community center, and some multiple folks brought up a community center combined, maybe with an elder care center. I don't know what the viability of that would be, but it was mentioned by multiple people. And then, of course, the unhoused population. And there's, I think there were some issues with that recently that lots of people expressed empathy for, and lots of people said they would support some kind of treatment center that would be paired with a, with a homeless unhoused shelter of some sort. So it seems like there is wide public support for that, at least among the people we talked to. And that's kind of most of it. So, I know that was a little scatterbrained, but any, any further questions for me?
So the people that expressed interest and empathy for the unhoused population, did they give you any ideas about where they would locate them?
Yes, so we had several conversations about that. People expressed that they did not want it necessarily on Broadway or on Main Street or downtown, but people thought maybe close to downtown somewhere, where, close to where the need would be, but not necessarily somewhere that would disrupt the business of downtown. So that's, that's the input that we got. Good question.
So you, you said there's been a couple of public hearings on that?
No, we had focus conversations and interviews, and then we also have a survey out, so we'll take some data from that survey. We're going to wait till we close it to, to go through the responses for that one.
Gotcha, but there will be public hearings on it?
On the.
On the comprehensive plan.
Oh, yes, yes. Three panel meetings in October, and then they did the focus group.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then there'll be additional public meetings.
And this was feedback collected from that, as well as individual interviews and focused conversations, yeah.
And the survey's on the city website?
Yeah, and we have, actually, right, I'll hand you that.
Oh, okay. I think I have one of those.
I have one for sure.
Do you want to follow up with next steps? I think that's all I got, unless there's any more questions.
Sure, it's on the website.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Just scroll down to the bottom. There's that, the correct table, and thank you to which.
Okay. Yeah, and I should add too, on the back of that postcard, we have a, a website for this project itself, and you can go on there and take a couple of visual surveys. You can upload photographs of problem areas or good things you like in the community. I am personally the person that goes through those photos, and we've never had anything inappropriate uploaded so far, so I hope we keep that streak, because I look. And we also have a way for people to add points on a map, so it's a very visual way. After taking the survey, people can still add their thoughts on a map, shows us, hey, this is exactly where street intersection X is in bad shape. Things like that, so there's a lot of ways for people to get involved, on top of the in-person ones we did, and in the future, so. So as far as next steps, with that document, we're going to keep going through it. There's a lot more, I guess, it's a cataloging of facilities, of services in the community. Again, we want to make sure we get that right, so then we can talk about goals and policies and how you support those things. I believe, Zach, we've been talking, come out in about March sometime, start talking about land use and future land use. Again, like I said, we want to get the data right, so we can project future land uses in the right way, because that's, you know, half the battle for this plan. And then, we already talked about the survey, I just want to say, we only have a hundred and thirty-nine responses, which is sadly very good compared to a lot of communities. In Grand Island, we had that thing open for a year and a half and got five hundred responses. And we, we even had a Spanish version of the survey. We went out on the radio, television, Telemundo, and five hundred. So I think Scotts Bluff can do better than that, so. It's a small number, but as long as we get a good representative sample, we'll, we'll go with it. But again, we're gathering input from so many other ways, that's not the end-all, be-all, so. Got anything else? Because that's, that's all we've got tonight. Hopefully, we've given you guys some good stuff to review, and then we'll just keep working with the staff here on moving forward, so.
What is the plan for the target date to have this done?
I am not entirely, this year, I'm not entirely sure on a date that we've discussed, Zach.
For the code enforcement, it's a twelve eighteen month process, which would be July eighteen, December.
Yeah. Okay. Yep.
This seems really open-ended.
It, it kind of is. That's why we leave it twelve to eighteen months, because if we upfront get a lot of great input and the surveys, you know, taking, a lot of people have taken it, we can move quickly. That's great, but if there's issues we need to get into, things we need to review, we leave it kind of open-ended in that way, so. But I will say, this year, we'll have this, we'll be, we'll be back here this year to give you a final document to go through, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next scheduled meeting is February tenth. Did you want to speak?
The way I looked on it.
I read the newspaper article on it, and I understood this was supposed to be a, a hit public hearing on the comprehensive plan.
It was a public hearing for the Tipton redevelopment project.
Well, the newspaper.
Update on a public, of a project.
On, on the one project?
Yeah.
Okay, so it, it wasn't on the comprehensive plan?
No.
So, okay, I think the newspaper maybe had it wrong, or else I read it wrong. So, okay, I'll take it to the council first.
Well, you, you can still comment.
It's an update, yeah. He just gave us updates and what they've got.
A comprehensive plan is no good unless your council, your planning commission, your planning and zoning all buy into it and stick with it. I'm from Hunts Acres to start with. I was there in seventy-five when the city came in and, and insisted that they had to annex it because of some of the housing situations were unsanitary. They made various promises. In the end, probably seventy-five percent of the people signed up for it. We were promised that in the long run, there'd be fifty-foot street rightaways, fifty-foot streets, other things. And you could have single-wide mobile homes developed as long-term living facilities to develop just like you would a home, as long as it was on a half acre. And, but you had to go with the plan that they had figured in nineteen seventy-seven. Since then, that has never been adhered to. Even when you bring it up to planning and zoning, they still don't, they don't recognize that as being something that they need to go by. They'll just over, override it, or if nothing else, they'll say, go to the, the Board of Adjustments. And I've developed seven and a half acres out there. I've done it according, everyone that I have developed has had the allowance for a fifty-foot rightaway. They had a fifty-foot rightaway on a lot, or that side was twenty-five foot on a street out there, and planning and zoning allowed, allowed people to put a home in and move it closer to the street than what was allowed by planning and zoning rules. They've allowed a, a number of other things that were not according to planning and zoning rules. And then nowadays, I'm told that if, they want to hold that area so they can run water across it if there is a flood. We haven't had a flood out there that, you've got a highway there that would stop ninety percent of the floods, ninety-nine percent of floods. All you have to do is fill a couple of culverts. And, but the person who's in charge of, of that nowadays said, well, we're holding that in case we want to put water in there if there is a flood. And we're told that we cannot put a standard or a riff that would work on a mobile home. If you have a single-wide mobile home there, you've got to put a, a riff over, so the mobile home can be pulled out. And then we're told that you can't put in single-wide mobile homes. That wasn't according to the agreements that were made. We've got people that have been out there for fifty years, a lot of people. And, you know, I've, I've put a lot of money into that over the years. And the street that's right next to my house is the one that planning and zoning decided they could go ahead and squeeze that right away. Now we've got about a fifteen-foot street there with a tree going right out into it. I've spoken to the code enforcement officer a number of times over the past year. It's still out there. The street isn't maintained. It just, they, they have just totally forgotten about that part of the city. It's just the way it is. And, you know, unless this city decides they want to stand up to their promises, I have no respect at all for the city.
Thank you. Is that all the comments for the day? Okay, so, the next scheduled meeting is February tenth, twenty twenty-five, and if we could have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Roll call please, Zach.
All of them.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.